Everybody, good evening. I think we're live.
Thank you.
Welcome to night two of our information sessions for the upcoming May 12th special and annual town meeting. If you haven't met me last time, my name is Michael Rosen. I'm the Town's Assistant General Manager. And tonight, we're going to be going through night two's information session, which is going to focus on town meeting 101, land use 101, and then we're going to go through special town meeting number two's articles, which there are 10 of them for this upcoming town meeting, which is again, May 12th. You're going to hear me keep beating that like a broken record here. I'm joined by Jerry Slater. She's the town moderator, town moderator. We'll be hearing from her very soon. I just also wanted to, while I have the slides for a second here, I just wanted to advertise that tomorrow night, May 1st, we do have one more information session. It's the final information session prior to our upcoming town meeting. This information session is going to focus on special town meeting number one's 12 articles, and then also talk about the Community Preservation Act articles, of which there are seven projects, plus also a couple of other articles, which will make more sense tomorrow when you see the agenda. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jerry Slater, again, town moderator, who is going to be a familiar face to you at town meeting coming up. Thank you.
The beauty of it is I can stand and still have the mic. So welcome, everybody, and thank you, Mike. First of all, thank you all for being here. Number one, thank you for being here to be part of the information session. So you're prepared, ready, whether you're online, or you're here in person, or you're watching this on demand on ACM. Also, the town is providing replays as well, in order to prepare yourself for business at hand at upcoming town meeting. And a huge thank you for being willing to serve. So being a town meeting member is, I'm going to say, it's the most important position in this town, because town meeting members are the ones who mainly vote on the most important business of the town. So how many people here are new town meeting members?
Thank you.
We've got here. So for the veterans, some of this may be old hat, but we'll take it from there. All right. This is what we're going to cover tonight, and I'm going to be joined in a few moments by town clerk Mary Lou Bowden, and Fincom Chair Maya Bodhopper, who will be handling parts of this presentation as well. Obviously, we just went through the purpose of the session, and some of the introductions for the people that will be joining me. We're going to go through the different types of town meeting, including the calendar, some of that for folks that have been with us for a while. You know the cadence, but for the new folks, that'll be important. Rules of procedure, how you can register to speak, which is something that is unique to the Norwood Town Meeting, and I will say is the envy of many moderators in the Commonwealth when they hear about it. Talk about the warrant, what it is and what it isn't. And then, as I said, we'll also be talking about, still slightly new, electronic voting at town meeting, which we were happy to introduce last year, right? So we'll go from there. Town clerk, we'll talk a little bit about the prep, and then I'll just quickly tell you what the selectmen do. To be honest with you, Mr. Donnelly, no disrespect, but it's like a quick, a quick before-town meeting mention of what the selectmen do. So in the interest of time, I'm going to cover it. And then the role of lineance commission, which again, for annual town meeting is extremely important. Maya will take a screen there. So now, you're elected to town meeting, you're walking into the auditorium at Norwood Senior High School, and it's, what are you being faced with? So a little of that is, first of all, we ask, and Mike mentioned it, we will start at 6:30 on the 12th. And those of you who are veteran town meeting members know that I will dabble at 6:30. The expectation is that we have a quorum at that point, and we can shove right through after some opening things that we do, like the pledge, like a little bit quickly on the rules, announcements and such. We will also swear in new town meeting members. The town clerk will talk about that as well. But I hope that you'd be ready to go. Yes, at town meeting, to sit in front of the auditorium. Two very important reasons for that. One is, so I can see you if you want to be called on. And the second reason is, with electronic voting, there is a transmitter within the hall that's in the front of the auditorium. So in order to make sure that your electronic voting device is working, we ask that you move to the front. We have a section, we all have a section in the back, that will be cornered off with police tape for non-town meeting members. And again, anyone who is registered to vote in the town of Norwood can attend and participate by speaking at town meeting, but only town meeting members can vote. The other thing which you're already doing now is, before you get there, and again, we recommend you get there about 6:15 or so, in order to check in, and again, Mary Lou will take you through everything you need to do before you sit down, is the preparation. Budget books are here tonight. They're available at town hall. Please look at the budget book before you come to town meeting. You'll be able to follow along as we vote on the different motions, but all the detail for the town and school budget is listed in there, including the shared services budget as well. So very important. Maya will talk about that a little bit more, but please try to correct the numbers. So we are a representative town meeting. We are one of 32 communities in the Commonwealth that continue to be a representative town meeting, which means that we have representatives from nine districts. You all are elected by your district to represent your district. We will have, throughout the year, we have basically three, two different kinds of town meetings. The town meeting that we have coming up on the 12th, which is a part of our bylaw, is the annual town meeting. That is where the budget for the town is presented, as well as the Community Preservation Act articles. We also will have special town meetings throughout the year. Typically, our cadence is fall, around the October-November town timeline. We do, if there is enough business, have a zoning town meeting in the winter months. Winter apparently is the time for zoning, is that right, Esther? So that typically happens in the January-Febuary-March timeframe, if we have enough business to act on. And then, of course, the annual and specials coming up in May. This time, we have not only one special, but we will have two specials, which you should have seen as you've gotten your warrants already. Rules. Again, we are very, very fortunate in the town of Norwood. I participate in the Massachusetts Moderators Association. I'm a member of the Board of Directors. There are many different variations of rules for town meetings. Some follow parliamentary procedure, some follow office rules, some follow a publication called Town Meeting Time. We actually have our rules written in our town bylaws. So everything that really governs town meeting occurs in the town bylaws. That is up, and one of the things that you have up there is you have a QR code. That QR code on every page of this presentation will take you to the town meeting page on the town website. All the resources that you need are there, including the town bylaws, the act establishing town meeting, all the warrants, all the records of town meeting, including voting records and attendance records are there. So it's a one-stop shopping to learn that. Couple of things to just point out on the rules. It talks about debate, the amount of time that you are allowed to speak on a particular issue. For speakers, regular town meeting speakers who are recognized by the moderator, you have five minutes. You can have a one-time extension by our rules for that, if voted by the body. For presentations, in other words, a proponent of an article, or a board or committee, for instance, the Fincom, many times have the presentation, the school committee may have a presentation planning board at all. There is a 10-minute timeframe, and it can be 20 minutes for a group. Again, in both those cases, it can be a one-time extension. Couple of things, I ask you to take a look at things like point of order and point of privilege. A lot of times, our members will raise their hand with point of order. The only reason that you would be asking about a point of order, and the only reason I would recognize you, is if you think there's a rule violation. Now, that's rare. Not only am I there, but town councils are. So, and I have, as you might imagine, a lot of eyes watching over me. Point of privilege is if you need personal assistance. And again, that is rare. So please, please, please do not try to abuse either one of those, as sometimes members will do. Rules committee. It's another thing that's in our bylaws, and I will tell you, lucky, lucky, everybody, because one of the things the moderator has to do after this annual town meeting is appoint a new rules committee. We do it every five years. The current rules committee's term is ending with this annual town meeting, so I'll be appointing one of those. Addressing town meeting, Mike mentioned, I'm addressed as madam moderator. Any questions go through me. Please raise your hand to be recognized. We have mic runners that will get a mic to you. One of the other things that we will also try to do is have mics that you can walk up to in order to speed things along. We have a lot of business to be doing. Once you're recognized by the moderator, you state your name and your district. If you are not a town meeting member, you would state your name and address. Registering to speak.
Are we allowed to ask questions at this point? Is that okay?
Excuse me?
Is it hard to ask a question at this point?
You can, you can.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for the info session. I think you do a great job as moderator, and I love the new clickers. I have a question about the bylaws, and I mention this now because the rules committee, you say, is going to be reorganizing again. And I had asked you this question in email, but I never extended it. So I just kind of like out in the open. So if you're a registered speaker, you get five minutes unless you get allowed to go longer. But a proponent of an article gets to do a PowerPoint. But if I wanted to speak against it, I could not do a PowerPoint, even though it's within five minutes. I did not follow. I respected the answer, but I actually didn't know where that was in our bylaws.
Yep.
And I don't remember any discussion.
It's right in the rules. Right in the rules.
Okay.
And presentations, the word presentations, I will tell you, that is in, it says presentations, but it's materials is actually what it's referring to. And actually, it talks about those need to be two members in advance, at least, I believe it's seven days in advance of the meeting, any materials. Now, what I do do is, if you want to have a PowerPoint out on the table, because you're going to speak against it, but just for practicality of every speaker having a PowerPoint, just doesn't make a lot of sense in order to keep the meeting going, and our rules do not.
So is that a Norwood bylaw, or is that a state law?
No, it's a Norwood bylaw.
Okay.
Our rules are in the Norwood bylaws.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thanks for the question. All right. Registering to speak. Registering to speak is, again, something that is unique to us here in Norwood. It is in our bylaws. If you know that you want to speak on a particular article, you can register with the moderator via email, and my email is very simple. It's moderator@norwood.ma. Norwood.
Norwood.
Thank you. You can call me, or you can come up to me before town meeting. The warrant is already out, so you are eligible to register for any article once the warrant is published. It is out. So if you know you want to speak on an article, the way to guarantee that you will be called on before someone moves the question, which means we stop debate, is by registering to speak. So I strongly suggest, if you have something to say on an article, you register in advance to ensure that you will be able to speak.
How far in advance?
Once the warrant is out.
So these, yep.
So once the warrant is published, and it is published now, you can register with me. The best way to register is actually through email, because that way, and I will, I take the registration, the speakers, in the order in which they register. So there's no mystery there. I'm not stacking a deck or anything like that. It truly is. And with an email, I have a record of when people are registered. Question?
How many registered speakers do you allow per article?
As many as register. There's no limit on the number of registered speakers. And a registered speaker cannot move the question, which means if you're registered to speak, you will be guaranteed, because if someone tries to stop debate, who is a registered speaker, I will call them out of order, per our rules. Okay. Great questions. Thank you. The warrant, we just talked about the warrant. The warrant is out. And the warrant is the only business that we will, that we are allowed to discuss at town meeting. If it is not in the warrant, if it is not public, advertised, can't do it. So many times, people may have another issue they want to bring to town meeting. We can't, we can't have, I can't recognize it. And again, same thing, you'll see me respectfully tell the party who's speaking that they are out of order. So please, make sure any, anything that you are bringing up is within the confines of your warrant. We call it the four corners. I will give as much leeway as possible to remaining within the four corners of the actual article to recognize you, but if it is something completely off. So for instance, if it is a zoning bylaw article, and on flood plan, and you want to talk about kennels, I'm not going to, I'm going to call you out of order. So just be aware of that. The other thing that's really, really important to know is the warrant or the articles. So the articles are basically announcing the business that we are going to discuss and vote on at town meeting. The motions are the exact details. So a great example of that, Maya will talk about it, is with the, with some of the financial articles. We may not know numbers, you may not see numbers, in the article, but the motion will have the exact dollar amounts in it. So sometimes, it gets a little confusing, because you're looking at an article and saying, wait a minute, that wasn't what you told me about. Yeah, it was, because it's the details of the article that go in the motion. Now we get to the fun part real quick. So electronic voting. Thank you, madam.
Show and tell.
Show and tell. This is a clicker.
Or a clicker?
A clicker. It's the size of a credit card. The good news is, for people like me, who do lose something like this, we have a lovely lanyard for you to wear, that hopefully will make sure that you don't lose it. Electronic voting has been a game changer for town meeting. It has created efficiencies, accuracy, and I got to tell you, as a moderator, it takes everything, there's no doubt out of the equation of how a vote goes. Many times, for particular motions, there may be, so there could be a majority vote, but there may have to, maybe a two-thirds, depending on the motion, or in the case of unpaid bills, nine-tenths. This gives us an absolute exact count. Fortunately, our chief financial officer sits right next to me, and Mary Lou up on the stage at town meeting. So if I can't do the math on two-thirds, he's got, Jeff has got me covered on that. But we have the exact count on that. These are only work within the hall. They are totally secure. We are using the same system. We do a lot of work on this, that is used by the House of Representatives, the United States House of Representatives. So they have a little bit of fancy, I think it's built into their tables and everything, but it is absolutely the same system for already. I'm really excited about it. Mary Lou will talk to you about what happens if you try to leave the hall with your clicker. I'm going to make the joke at the end of town meeting, if you try to leave the hall, and you're successful. No one has been successful yet. Do not take that as a challenge. Retired Chief Brooks will show up at your house.
Oh.
Just saying. All right. Clickers, the electronic voting devices are very simple. There are only three buttons on there, as you can see there. There's a yes, there's a no, there's an extension. You will be, I will basically open up the voting. We'll test the clickers, by the way, before we start, to just make sure everybody's clicker is working, and you know how to use them. It's the first night of town meeting. I will open up the vote. There will be approximately 60 seconds for everyone to vote, which is a change based on your feedback, by the way. 10 seconds before voting is going to close, I will give you a warning. I will announce the voting is closed, and then we'll announce the results. You'll actually see the results on the screen, on the big screen as well. In addition, the results are published on the town meeting site by the town clerk's office as well, so there's full transparency on that. If you change your mind, so for instance, if you're voting yes, and then a few, you're like, I don't know, I really meant no, you can change your vote, as long as the voting hasn't closed. The last vote that, the last button that you press is the one that's going to get registered. All right. And you'll also see an okay on the keypad. I will tell you, it is a little hard to see. I will admit that, but you'll also see that you've registered your vote.
Yes, sir. Are the clickers tied to individual person, or just a vote? So does it register that me by my name?
You have a clicker assigned to you.
It's a number.
Yes, a number.
And you'll always get the same number.
Like, for instance, I'm holding 275. Is that going to be mine?
That's an extra.
No. Okay.
I'm not going to tell anybody.
And I'm only, so I only vote if there's a tie. Please, please, no tie. There's too much pressure on me. But you will have the same clicker assigned, device assigned to you. That is yours, as long as you're a town meeting member, which you do turn them in after each session.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
But who votes?
Yeah. I think we kind of got, yeah, I think I've already said that, that you can, you know, again, it's your last vote that counts. So, all right. Mary Lou. So we're really fortunate to have the A-team in the town clerk's office. And Mary Lou, she's going to take you through a few things to know before, during, and after town meeting.
So I get the same speech every year. I know one of you, but there are some new town meeting members here, too. And congratulations to everybody that got reelected and newly-elected town meeting members. Actually, we lowered the quorum this year. It was the first year. That's why everybody had a rerun. And I can tell you that we filled every district itself one, and we're only missing five town meeting members. So that's good.
Was it district five, Mary Lou, that didn't fill?
Right. But they're only missing five people. So that's not too bad. We had a lot of write-in campaigns, and they were great write-in campaigns, because we still needed people. So we were able to fill every district.
That was great.
Except the district five. But that's okay. So my office sent out packets about two weeks ago, and I'm so sorry that you didn't receive yours. But it had the term letter in it. It had a, indicating the length of the term that you bought reelection, that you bought in for, not reelected, but the term that you bought in for, one, two, or three. It also had an email form, and we've gotten really good responses with the email forms. We have extra forms at the office, or I will bring some extras. And that's because we do send a lot of emails out, you know, before and during and after town meeting every once in a while. So it's good to give us all, you know, email addresses and stuff. It also had a letter explaining the procedure. If anybody moves out of town, or moves within a district, what you're supposed to do, you're supposed to notify me if you move within a district, but you'll continue to serve in that district until the next town election. If you move out of town, then obviously you don't serve that. But we, it's good to know that, because it keeps track, and if you keep track of where people are, and where people are going, it definitely helps that. And then also, it told you to go, click the link on the website, as Jerry mentioned. It has the link for the town meeting bylaws, the town bylaws, and the chat, which is, they're all on that town meeting website. So it's all there. So I'm sorry if anybody didn't get it. Hopefully, everybody did. I think everybody, I mean, for Mr. Johnson, we've had comment in the office. Everybody seems to have gotten everything we've sent out so far. And there's also a letter in there that explains how you can come into the office to get sworn in, if you are a new town meeting or an existing town meeting member. If you can't, I do a swearing-in ceremony before town meeting on the 12th. I'll do that. So it's not necessary if you can't get into the office. That's fine. So when you come into town meeting, when it starts on the 12th, there's three tables in the hallway. They're split up, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So whatever district you're in, look ahead at the signs that we have posted. Just go right to that table. And my staff will check you in. You just give them your name. They will give you, they'll check you in on the poll pad that we use for the attendance. They'll give you a pink attendance card. What you're going to do is sign your name next to the date on the attendance card. And when you go into the auditorium, there'll be a policeman standing at the doorway. Give him your card, because he is a clicker, that he keeps track of how many people we have. That's how we get our quorum. We know when we have a quorum. So make sure that you do sign the card, and you sign it next to the date, and give it to the policeman on the way in. And then you will get, you also get a town meeting badge. Just very basic, says town meeting on it. You need the badge in order to be able to vote, as well as, you're going to get the clicker as well. But make sure you have your badge as well, too, because that's how Jerry can tell, or Madawater can tell, you know, who's town meeting member and who is it. And we ask you to all kind of sit down in the front section, as most people can. And then you also get, from my staff, they'll give you the clicker that's associated with your name, and you'll have your number. That's how we keep track of it. Everybody's going to have the same number for the whole year, until we have an election, and then we'll just issue new numbers next year. So you'll get that. At the end of the night, or if you have to leave the auditorium for anything during the meeting, when you go out, make sure that you give the clicker to somebody that's, and my staff, sitting at the table. And then when you're ready to go back in, they'll give it back to you. Don't walk around with it. Don't, you know, go outside with it or anything else.
And don't give it to your seatmate to vote for.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Just leave it with you at all times. Just leave it with you at all times and stuff. And then when you go back in, you know, like my, my staff will give it right back to you and stuff. At the end of the night, there'll be two people from either Marcy or Emily or Tricia will be at the end of the hallway. Pass your clickers and your badges back. They'll have big blocks that they'll be holding. So just throw them in there, and don't leave with the clickers or the badges. It's so much easier, because we'll put them together the next day. Where my office is responsible for sending out all the information for town meeting. All the yellow sheets, all the warrants. Hopefully, everybody's got theirs already so far. The annual town meeting warrant is in your budget book. That's why you didn't get it in the mail specifically. That's in the budget book. But the other two warrants should have come, they should have got the three yellow sheets, two warrants that came in mail last week. And there'll be handouts. We do have extra copies made. But if you've already gotten like all the yellow sheets and stuff, they'll be in the inner lobby when you go into the auditorium downstairs. Because in the lobby, there'll be a big table. If anybody has any new handouts that they want us out, they can call us. We can bring them. Or you can come early and bring them and leave them on the tables. And they'll be all, every, all the handouts will be on the tables outside of the main auditorium. And I, let's see, we have, so currently, we have 256 town meeting members. The total we need is 261 votes, 257 if Jerry isn't come, Madam Moderator. And then the quorum is gonna be 130 people. So we can't stat until we actually have 130 people in the meeting. Yes, Debbie?
Do we have to, if we wanna put a handout on the table, do we ask Madam Moderator or yourself?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Hopefully, the handouts, most of the handouts that we put on the tables are related to the articles that we're gonna be talking about. Anybody have any questions? Great. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, if you, if I wanted to find out more information about one of the articles for the May 15th meeting, but I didn't really wanna tie up town meeting to have a conversation to understand one of the warrants better, do I just reach out to the different departments or people? Where would I, how would I go find out even more than like on the yellow sheet about something like the flood plan over the district?
You can call me.
You can always call my office for any of the land use. I'd be super happy to talk to you.
Perfect.
And Sarah will be talking in a few minutes, also, if she does a land use 201.
Right. If anybody has any questions, call my office, you know, we'll, I can give you the answer. I'll find somebody with that.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Quickly, we're gonna get to Maya in one second. The role of the selectmen, people may, may ask this. I'm really, really sad that Tony is unable to be here tonight. Because normally, he talks about the fact that once town meeting starts, the moderator is the boss. I mean, it's the only time he will say that I am actually the boss of the entity. Somehow, based on him like, you know, doing one of these bits, I wonder if I really am the boss. But it is actually true. Once town meeting starts, the moderator is, and I don't wanna say I'm the boss, but you know, my role is to facilitate town meeting. The selectmen do not have more power than the FinCom, than the school committee, than the planning board or whatever. It's, it's everybody, everybody is equal fit at footing, and the moderator is going to direct things. The selectmen beforehand, though, do a couple of things. They will set the meeting dates and times. The one exception is by our bylaw, the annual town meeting date is part of our bylaws. So that is not a decision to be made. But they will determine special town meetings, they'll determine the start time, and they'll also determine what's gonna be on the warrant. And again, you will see when the selectmen vote on warrants, they may not approve certain articles to go on the warrant. But that's, that's their right to do it as selectmen. And then the other thing is, Mary Lou just talked about the yellow sheets. The yellow sheets are produced by the Board of Selectmen and voted on by them as reference material for you to utilize. All right. That brings us to the Finance Commission. And we're very fortunate to have the Chair of the FinCom, Maya Bodenhauer, here. Question, Mr.?
I have one question here. I can sue the actual town meeting. Let's get to it. So we got the slides that are up on the screen, and then we also have these written ones that we had. Which ones are we actually voting on? Because sometimes there are differences of wording.
Yeah, and that, when I talked before about the difference between the article and the motion, the motion is what you're voting on. So the motion is always gonna be up on the screen. That's what you're gonna see. The article may have more detail on it, some other detail, but it's going to, the motion is gonna pertain to the article. You vote on a motion. You don't vote on an article. You don't vote on a power presentation either, by the way. But that's what you're voting.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So like Jerry, I can also use the microphone when I'm standing up. I'm the Chair of the Finance Commission, and our role by charter is to advise town meeting. We are responsible for reporting on the overall financial health of the town, for analyzing any financially-related requests, any, any warrant articles. And you can think of a warrant article like an agenda, right? So the agenda is, so anything on that agenda, any of those articles that are financially-related, it's FinCom's responsibility to analyze that, do the due diligence, and make a recommendation. Obviously, as town meeting members, you guys are all also encouraged to do your own due diligence on things. But it's our responsibility to do that and present that information to you. And it's also our responsibility to actually make the motion on any financially-related article at town meeting. Okay? So we, along with Jeff O'Neill's office, annually come up with a budget book. So I encourage you to look at the budget book. I know it's like an inch thick. There's a lot of information in here. We, I have a letter at the beginning, and then Tony has a letter at the beginning. And then you start to get into dashboarded trends. These are the important things that we think we would like all town meeting members to look at, to understand, before we go into voting on the budget. And then this also includes all the detail for the budget. And as Mary Lou mentioned, this includes the warrant for the annual town meeting, which is where we are voting on the operating budget for the next fiscal year. I don't know what was covered on Monday night about, in the municipal 101, but I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but Town Works on a fiscal year, we start on July 1. We go through June 30. The fiscal year is numbered according to the, the number at the end of the fiscal year. So we are currently in FY '25, and we will be voting on FY '26, which will start July 1. So everything you see in the book is all related to those, all those numbers are fiscal years. I think I got everything there. So this is an example of what the budget book looks like. As I said, we're gonna be voting on FY '26. So if you look on the far right column, that is the FY '26 request. That is the recommendation from the Finance Commission based on the requests from general government, from the schools, from facilities, and then all of the shared costs that we have, things like health insurance and pension and all those costs. The column just to the left of that says FY '25 budget. The reason we only have the budget number there is because we're still in the middle of FY '25. So we haven't yet completed that. All we can tell you about this current year, which is the year previous to what we're voting on, is what we approved last year. But then for prior years before that, you have the actual numbers there. So you can see trends over time that we present 22, 23, 24, actuals, 25 budget, and 26 request. Just to mention that the school budget is our largest budget item. It's about $65 million for this upcoming year. That is the town appropriation to the schools. The schools also get additional money from the state from a program called the Special Education Circuit Breaker. They get additional funds from the federal government, the Title I grants, the Title III grants, things like that. All of those grants are also added to the schools, are, to support the school budget. So it's not, the schools are not completely supported by town budget, but town budget is a huge percentage of the school budget. By state law, the town meeting can only vote on the bottom-line budget. The school committee has full authority to spend that money as they wish, within, and move money around in their budget. Is there a question?
What impact is the budget gonna have because of Trump cutting funding? You said all this stuff's included, but is it really going to be included given what's been happening in Washington?
I would love to know the answer to that question, right? I think we all would love to know the answer to that question. For the coming fiscal year, the schools are reasonably confident that the Title I funding, that the Title III funding will be coming through. Those are all governed by statute. That's not a, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not something that anybody gets to vote and choose on. It's something that's set by statute. And there are formulas that apply. But we are concerned about how the schools, actually, we're concerned about how general government may be impacted by federal changes as well, but especially the schools. Yes, Cheryl?
Can I ask you a question on some, I was watching, I've been watching the school committee meetings, Lord knows why, but I have. And one of the board members made the remark that they had, that there was extra free cash. And then they were like discussing it. Now, mind you, this was in the last month. I want to spend it on. If you have extra free cash, shouldn't it be turned back to the town instead of looking for things to spend it on? Or is there a reason for it?
Okay, so I just wanna clarify some language here. So free cash has a very specific meaning with regard to municipal finance, right? And that refers to at the end of a fiscal year, the, there is money typically that's available, either free cash from the previous year that rolls over or unspent budgeted money, things like where we spend less than we budgeted, or where revenues come in higher than we anticipated, right? And then at the end of the fiscal year, Jeff's office works really hard, puts us together all this information, submits it to the state. The state then certifies our official free cash. And so that happens typically in October-ish. And last year, we had a really large amount of free cash. It was certified at $29.8 million. We talked about that at fall town meeting, previews of coming attractions. I'm gonna talk about it again a week from Monday. That money, so that's the official free cash. But I think maybe that's not exactly what you're asking about. You're asking about our, if the schools have some line items in their budget where they spent less than they anticipated. They have the full ability to move money around within their budget and reallocate it to something else. Because, I mean, we can talk about exactly why the state law is such as it is. I think that the justification for that is that the schools have to be able to react to any student who shows up and says, I just moved to town, I'm enrolling today, and you have to accommodate them immediately. And so the schools need to have that flexibility in their budget. But because they have that flexibility in their budget, most school districts throughout the Commonwealth do not return unspent budgeted money to free cash. And instead, they find other ways to use it. Oftentimes, when they made their budget the previous year, there was something that they trimmed back because they thought they needed to do something. And so then, when they find that, you know, a, a teacher was left, and they replaced them with a newer teacher who was making less money, there's a little bit of money available. Maybe that money can now be spent on the textbooks that they wanted, or something like that. So that's their responsibility as school committee members. In the last nine years or so, there have been a few times that the schools have returned money to free cash. And that was when there was sort of a specific agreement about that. You might remember that a couple of years back, we were really struggling to get vans for special education transportation. And because we couldn't purchase the vans, we were having to use a lot of contractors and services instead of our own internal people. And so the school committee came to town meeting in that fall, I think, and said, we need some extra money because we, we had this plan to buy buses, we have money to buy vans, but there just are no vans to be had because of all the supply chain problems. And so they, they asked for additional money, but they said, we want, I don't remember exactly what the number was, but say it was $300,000. We want $300,000 so we have this buffer. But we promise you, if we don't need all of this money, we will give it back at the end of the year. And that's what wound up happening. They gave a good chunk of it back at the end of the year because they didn't need as much as they might, that doubt they might.
When it's given back, where does it go?
So what happens is it gets unspent, and then at the end of June 30, when, when the accounts close, I think they close a couple of weeks later, but, you know, effective June 30, then whatever money remains unspent in school budget, general government budget, that would then roll into free cash the following fall. That's where, that's the source of free cash.
And any, any part of the town government and schools can use that free cash or request that free cash to cover budget items?
So free cash, once it's been certified, can be allocated by town meeting. But it can only be allocated by town meeting. In order for it to be allocated by town meeting, there are several steps. So first, the Board of Selectmen would have to vote to put it on the warrant, put an article on the warrant to spend it. And then the Finance Commission would make a recommendation. And then we would make a motion at town meeting, and then town meeting can vote it up or down. Or you can amend it, the motion and things like that as well. All right, I don't wanna get us too, we're supposed to be focused on town meeting, so I don't wanna get us too far off on free cash. But are there any other questions? All right. So Madam Moderator mentioned that there is a yellow sheet that is put out by the Board of Selectmen. FinCom puts out a pink sheet. We will be voting on the official pink sheet for this year's town meeting tomorrow night at our meeting, at our FinCom meeting. And then it will be mailed out to you on Friday, so you should have it the week before town meeting. And that shows our recommendation of what we are recommending for all the special town meeting articles. This book shows you everything we're recommending for the operating budget. So we don't put all of this information, again, in the pink sheet. But for example, the general government and the schools together are asking for, I think it's $150,000 for a new human resources module to be used for, in our munis system, to streamline operations for both general government and the schools. Something on the town meeting, special town meeting one. That article will be, will be discussed at town meeting one, special town meeting one. Then FinCom will make a motion to allocate free cash to cover that cost. And then the body will make a vote on that. They'll deliberate and then vote. All right. So this is what the pink sheet typically looks like. You'll be able to follow along, and it shows information about the total amount of free cash and money in some stabilization funds and things like that for adding money to stabilization fund or taking money from stabilization fund. Okay?
Any questions on, on either what Mary Lou brought up, Maya brought up, or I brought up as part of town meeting 101? And there'll be time for questions at the very end, also, before we bring up someone who's taller, who's gonna talk about land use 101. All right? Looks like we're with nothing online right now.
Nope, nope.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we've got, we've got two people that are taller than Maya, myself, and Mary Lou. We've got Sarah Dixon, who is our Director of Community Planning. And I guess our building commissioner is gonna, he's providing, so he's the phone-in friend, right? Commissioner is going to, he's providing, so he's the phone o' friend, right?
How would you process this?
All right, Sarah Dixon.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Dixon. I'm the Director of Community Development. It's great to see you all here. Thank you for serving on Town Meeting, it's such an important role in the town. I wanted to be able to kick off just with a general overview of land use in the town of Norwood and give you some familiarity, if you're new to this group, about how land use works in the town, how it's enforced, and what role you make play as a town meeting member in that. There are regulatory boards and staff departments that work on land use. One is the Building Department. Gary Pelletier is our Building Commissioner. He heads up a group of inspectors that enforce the building code, but also our zoning bylaw, which is our regulatory document that sorts out what land uses are permissible in what parts of town and under what conditions. So Gary and his team are responsible for enforcing the building code, but also the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw is, I wish I had a copy of it with me, it's a rather substantial and dry document that divides the town into various districts, and like I said, it kind of organizes all of our uses accordingly. Yeah, so the bylaw has a whole lot of different sections talking about different types of special regulations. Kind of the meat and potatoes of it are a table of uses and the table of dimensional requirements. The dimensional requirements relate to structures, your setbacks, right, where your home can be relative to your lot lines on your property, building height, those are your dimensional requirements. The uses are how they organize uses throughout town. Zoning and planning as an industry kind of came about at the turn of the century to try to protect people from industry and factories that were spouting up at that time and spewing all sorts of noxious odors and gases around. So it was, the idea was to protect public health. Obviously, it's a lot more nuanced today, but the same principle still applies, right? Making sure that we have commercial uses in appropriate districts and residential uses in areas where that's protected as well. So we also follow fairly strictly the State's Zoning Act. So our zoning bylaw is compliant with the zoning act, but in Massachusetts, we are able to enact local zoning that goes kind of above and beyond the state's zoning requirements. So I, we covered most of this generally. This is an example of what our zoning map looks like. The more districts we add, the more of a rainbow kaleidoscope it becomes. But we have business districts, and we also have different types of residential districts. And in each of these districts, the dimensional requirements and the uses that are permissible are different. This is an example of the use table. You can see every column represents a different district in town, and then every row represents a different use. The use table is extensive, it does not capture every possible use, and we do find that as our town evolves and changes, there are uses that become contemplated that are not in our zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw is a, I would say, it's a dynamic document, it's evolving and changing, it has to change along with our community to reflect our needs. I can give you an example of, you know, uses that maybe didn't kind of come along over time. Urgent care facilities is a good example of one that's kind of come before, you know, Gary's desk and my desk in recent years. Our table of uses, you know, talks about hospitals and it talks about doctors' offices, but urgent care is kind of a newer use, right? How do we fit that into our bylaw? Same thing with like permanent makeup. The closest thing we have is a tattoo as a potential use, right? The body art establishments. So we can't list every possible use here, but we do try to capture and cover the different types of uses that might come up in town.
Having had to go through old zoning bylaws, looking at pages 12 and 13, which has some of this information, why isn't there a legend to tell you what these letters and abbreviations mean?
That's a good question. I think there is a description at some point in there, but I can tell you right now what they are.
Yeah, there is a legend.
There's a legend at the very beginning, I think, of the table of uses.
In the articles?
Not in the articles.
Yeah, it would be helpful if there would be one.
Okay, thanks for the suggestion. So where the row and the column meet to determine whether a use is allowed in a particular district, you've got Y for yes, it's allowed, no, it's not allowed, PB, which means it's allowed with a special permit from the planning board, BA, which means it's allowed via special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And then there are numbers that you may see that correspond to specific footnotes, which come after the table, which sometimes gives special circumstances or parameters relative to that particular use in that spot.
We also need to know the headings. Like I know LM is limited manufacturing, only because I've been familiar, but that should have been in here.
Yeah, so in the zoning bylaw section 2 does list all of the acronyms for the different, different zoning districts, but yes, I agree, there's a lot here to look at and more and more as time goes on. And this is the table of dimensional requirements. Again, it functions similarly in that you've got rows for various dimensional requirements and then the columns are the different districts. How do we enact new zoning? So typically, the planning board is the regulatory body that advances new zoning proposals with assistance from my department, the Community Development Department. We worked together over the year to think about ways that the zoning bylaw does need modification to reflect the changing needs of our community. The board will do research, it will discuss in an open session throughout the year proposed zoning changes. Once it has a proposed change, it will hold public hearings on those changes and then submit them to the Board of Selectmen and request that they be placed on the warrant for town meeting. Once it is placed on the warrant and comes before you all, planning board is also responsible for making a formal recommendation to town meeting about whether or not they support that article. But ultimately, the deciding factor on whether or not our zoning bylaw is changed is up to all of you. Most zoning amendments require a two-thirds majority in order to be accepted and adopted. There are certain, there are certain changes, mostly relative to housing development, that only require a single majority, and that's a fairly recent change by state law. So after town meeting votes to accept a zoning change, then there's still one more step. Mary Lou's office works pretty closely with my department, and we submit a package of materials to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General has to sign off on every municipality's zoning changes before they can come into effect. So it is a lot of responsibility for town meeting, and it's a long road. So changing zoning is not something that happens quickly, it's something that has to involve a lot of thought by a lot of people before it actually goes into place. Once it's adopted into our zoning bylaw and it's in effect, that's where Gary comes into the picture. His team is responsible for enforcement to make sure that the structures that are constructed in town and the uses that are pursued at individual properties townwide are in full compliance with the zoning bylaw. And that happens through approval of building permits, inspection of the projects. If you are a resident who has a complaint or you'd like to request enforcement on a perceived violation, again, it's Gary that you would email and request some follow-up and more information on that as well. Gary's office also has the ability to issue fines and compel compliance with the zoning So just to kind of go back and introduce you again to the planning board, the planning board is a five-member elected board. You do have a sixth associate member that attends all of the meetings and is positioned to serve in the case of an absence on a special permit application. One of their primary roles in, you know, this context is developing planning policy and putting together proposed, you know, zoning amendments, but also our strategic and long-term planning. I'll do a little plug, we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan, which is a 10-year document, kind of visioning for Norwood's future. I have extras of these right here, if you'd like to participate, we still have, our open, our survey is still open, and we have lots of other engagement materials, so please grab one of these on your way if you haven't done that already. But that's the planning boards, that's their area of expertise. They also meet every two weeks to review permitting applications, so subdivision applications, special permits, when it's specified in the zoning bylaw that a project requires planning board review, site plan approvals, and major projects all receive the benefit of review by the planning board. The zoning board of appeals is another one of the regulatory boards that works on land use. It's a five-member board, also, it's appointed by the Board of Selectmen. They hear and decide applications, mostly for special permits, they are the variance-granting authority. A variance is another form of zoning relief in addition to a special permit, where if a applicant is seeking some sort of an exception to the dimensional requirements of the bylaw, they do have the ability to ask for that special relief in the form usually of a variance, sometimes in a special permit, depending on what it is and whether or not the bylaw allows for a special permit to be an option for that relief. But there are two different forms of relief with different varying degrees of requirements that go along with them. Zoning board of appeals also can hear appeals if anybody wants to appeal a determination by usually our building official. Can I just ask a question because you just brought it up about the difference between a variance and a special permit? Article 8 for the non-conforming uses speaks specifically to that difference?
Yeah.
Right? So I'm just curious if the, the increase in floor area from 25 to 75% would impact something like high setback or lot coverage, or do they still have to go for the variance if that 75% increase goes over sort of what the setback is supposed to be? That's a great question. Let's talk a little bit more about that article when we get to it, but just for right now, so put a pin on it, because that's kind of the meat and potatoes of that article. But I think it's a good point that talking a little bit more specifically about the difference between a special permit and a variance might be useful for this group. So a variance, and each of these are defined by state law, so this isn't kind of a Norwood invention, so to speak. We get to decide when special permits may be appropriate for the most part, but what a variance is and the legal thresholds that it requires are more or less derived from the State's Zoning Act 48. So a variance is kind of a higher form of zoning relief. Higher thresholds are more rarely and infrequently issued. They really are intended to be the kind of most unusual qualified exceptions to the zoning bylaw. They are not available for uses, they are only available for dimensional requirements. And the threshold requirements for variance, you have to be able to establish that there's something so unique about the lot or structures on your lot that literal enforcement of the bylaw on your proposal would render some sort of severe hardship. Most applications, when they're trying to construct an addition within the rear setback or, you know, build a structure that's taller than is required, most properties can't get over that uniqueness hurdle. Some can, right? And that's why that avenue exists for those extenuating circumstances, but a variance is a tough ask. Special permits are far more discretionary. The big question that the zoning board or the planning board, depending on the circumstance, that they have to get to yes on is, is this substantially more detrimental to the town generally or the neighborhood specifically than what's there already? And our bylaw includes a series of criteria that kind of break that down a little bit. Is it visually compatible? Are there positive social, community, and economic benefits? Is there a fiscal impact to the town, traffic in circulation, so on and so forth? But it kind of all boils down to that, is this substantially more detrimental? That is a little bit more discretionary. And typically, you know, both of these, when they're reviewed by the planning board or the ZBA, they do involve a public hearing where members of the public can come and speak in favor of or against, or even just to ask questions. The boards can consider those comments. Typically, they're more, far more relevant for a special permit because it's a little bit more subjective, right? Is this more detrimental? The variance less, so variance is going to only be granted by the ZBA. And we'll, I'll move on to the section 5.4 changes when we get to the articles.
Norwood Housing Authority, how does that relate to town government?
It seems to be like a completely separate thing?
It's not completely, but it's mostly separate. So they're a quasi-governmental agency. They're, if we're the policymakers, you know, think of them as a landlord, they own and operate their own portfolio of housing for a specific purpose, for a specific population that's income-qualified. They also administer voucher programs. So they're much more of a program operator, they have their own budget, and they're staffed separately from the town, but they are considered a kind of quasi-public agency.
Do they report, who do they answer to?
So public housing authorities have their own reporting structure, they're audited by the state, they kind of report to the state or the federal government, depending on the funding that they're using for their programs, and most housing authorities have a mix of both state and federal programs, and they report to those entities appropriately. And Conservation Commission is kind of the third regulatory board in the Community Development Department that operates with land use, less associated with any of the zoning amendments that you may see as a town meeting member, but they enforce the State's Wetland Protection Act and also our local wetland bylaw. They're a five-member appointed board as well. Conservation Commission is unique in that they also have a land management function. So they own a portfolio of conservation properties around town, and they're responsible for maintaining of those properties. Okay, so we covered most of these definitions. Special permits and variances, I think we've covered that. Subdivision plans, that's a type of application that the planning board is responsible for reviewing. That's when you divide a large piece of land into multiple lots. Usually, you see those as residential subdivisions, but there can be commercial subdivisions as well. They always include the creation of a roadway in that process. An approval-not-required plan is another type of plan that the planning board can approve that does not involve the creation of a roadway, but it does split, essentially divide or aggregate lots in compliance with the size requirements of the bylaw. Site plan approval, again, that's a planning board application, it's a more technical review of commercial development to make sure that a larger project is complying with all the technical requirements of the bylaw. So things like stormwater management, drainage, lighting, landscaping, and of course, all of the dimensional requirements in the zoning, in the zoning bylaw. Major project is a type of special permit for especially large projects. Conservation Commission issues order of conditions and notices of intent, as well as process, request for determination applications relative to work that's contemplated within proximity of the wetland, the protected wetland areas. Okay, to the articles. I'll take a brief review from the article.
Yep. Any other questions for Sarah on land use? And she will be back in a few minutes when we get to the zoning articles. We're going to move on, no questions?
I'll come to the microphone.
We will go right into Special Town Meeting. Mike, do you want to?
Sure. So hi, everybody. So we thought we would wrap up tonight's information session by going through the 10 warrant articles for Special Town Meeting number two. This is the meeting that, if you look at your yellow sheet and warrant, is the meeting that, if you look at your yellow sheet, and warrant is called for May 15th at 6:30 p.m. So we are anticipating that we're going to get to this warrant on the second night of town meetings. If town meeting agrees that that night will be, you know, we'll see if we get it done in two nights. You never know. The first article, and actually, while we go through these 10 articles, you might see a couple of us staff switching and out depending on who sort of owns these articles. And the first article is actually related to the moderator's term. And would you like to pick this one, Madam Moderator?
Yeah.
Excellent. You got it, boss. All right.
And just procedurally, as Mike said, so what will happen the first night of town meeting on May 12th at 6:30 sharp, because I know everyone will be ready to go and will have a corner, we will open the annual town meeting, and then I will entertain a motion from the Board of Selectmen to adjourn the annual town meeting, and we will open up the first special town meeting. The reason that we do that, and you'll hear me explain it that night as well, but you should know this in advance, is because the articles that are on the special town meeting number one pertain to money that could affect decisions on the annual town meeting. So we do that business first to take care of that before we begin the annual town meeting. We'll then go through that special town meeting. We will take as much time as we need, as the body wants, to debate and vote. We will then reopen the annual town meeting. We will then, once we get through the annual town meeting, and again, I think it's highly unlikely we will finish annual town meeting that first night, so more than likely we will adjourn until Thursday. Thursday, we will reopen the annual town meeting. We may at some point, and actually, we don't have, and this is a little procedural thing, we don't have to necessarily open that special town meeting before we finish the annual town meeting. And once we finish the annual town meeting, we will open the second special town meeting. Second special town meeting is what we're talking about now. The first article up there is an article to change the term of the moderator from one year to three years. So currently, the term of the moderator, the only elected position in town that is less than three years is one year. This particular article will not only take an approval of town meeting, a majority approval of town meeting, but because the term of the moderator is part of the special act to establish Norwood's town meeting, representative town meeting, it also will need to go to the legislature for approval. Just to let you know that because this obviously concerns me as the moderator, I will be appointing a temporary moderator who will moderate this article rather than me doing that in order to make sure that, A, I can speak on it if I want to, and B, to make sure that it's above approach, reproach, especially in light of the fact that it does have to go with the legislature for approval. So the reason that we're recommending this is twofold. One, I can tell you now, I am now into, I will be starting my third year as town moderator, and having been through that experience, I can tell you, as formal moderators can, there is a pretty steep learning curve. This is, some folks may think that I just walk in and, you know, I'm hosting, I'm hosting a talk show. Far from it. The amount of preparation, the amount of knowledge that is needed, not only of mass general law, but as Sarah was just talking about, of zoning laws, Massachusetts' zoning laws, state statutes, our own town bylaws, is extensive. So to really have the full power of really knowledge, it can't be done in one year. Also, another reason behind it is, you know, thinking about others that may be interested in running for moderator, it's a bit of a, just doing it for a year is a bit of a turn off. The second reason is just from an efficiency standpoint, too. There is administrative work that has to be done for the moderator. Think about it from the clerk's office. Every year, the moderator now currently has to go out and get 50 signatures plus. They all have to be certified by the town clerk's office. There's campaign finance, paperwork that has to be filled out at all, at all. Anyone who's worked for office knows all of that stuff, so it does create inefficiency. But more importantly, it's really about the knowledge that is necessary. Towns, right now, the majority of towns that have town meeting, the term is three years. It is above 50%. There are more and more towns that are beginning to move in that direction, too. I'll go show you a slide in a second of several communities. And then the Mass Moderators Association is also recommending that towns adopt three-year terms. Some of the reasons for the one-year term, the Commonwealth allows either a one or a three-year term. The history of the one-year term is town meeting, which is a form of government that goes back to the 1600s in this country, so even before we became the United States of America. Many times, the role of the moderator is elected at town meeting, not elected by the community, just elected by whoever shows up for town meeting. And the moderator would serve for the term of that particular town meeting, which was a year. So that's where the origins, that's the origin story of it, if you will. So we are, the Selectmen have agreed to put this on the warrant. It will be up to town meeting to decide. And again, so you can see the surrounding area, what we're looking at. I will note that on the one-year, Canton and Westwood are both open town meeting towns. I think Ellis is too.
Ellis is.
Jeff, you?
Ellis is.
No. It is. Okay. So, you know, again, it's looking more to three years.
Does everybody know what an open town meeting is as opposed to what we have with district? I didn't know this until my cousin explained it to me.
Yeah. So I think I talked about it a little bit earlier. Representative town meetings are elected representatives from each voting district, so you're actually elected. Open town meeting, any registered voter in a town can come and show up and vote at an open town meeting. And again, the difference, you have a fluctuation in attendance, as you might imagine, big time in open town meetings. Some towns have actual issues with getting people even show up if there's nothing really controversial that they're voting on. So that's the big difference there. Yes, sir.
Does the article contain term limits?
No. I don't believe that any of our offices in the town hall would have term limits. And one of the things, I do want to throw this out because I do know that, you know, rebuttal to this potentially could be, well, what if the moderator, pardon my French, sucks? It means really bad. Just like any other officer in town, elected officer in town, you can recall any position in this town, and the town has the right to do that. So. Good question. Any other? All right. I finally get to stop talking.
Okay, so Article two addresses the, Article two proposes a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Tangent Development LLC. So Tangent Development is looking to build and operate solar panels on the town's landfill. Obviously, the town owns that land. And working with the light department, they've put together a proposal to purchase the generated power at a discounted rate and enhancing the town's green energy portfolio. They've requested to do what's called a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which is a practice for solar facilities in Massachusetts. We've actually done it once before with the MBTA lot. There's solar panels there as well, so the town has done this before. And it's pretty common to replace property taxes. Again, since we own the land, they wouldn't be charged property taxes, but we are taxing them in a way on the equipment that they're putting on the land. So this agreement has to adhere to the Department of Revenue guidelines, basing payments on the full and fair cash value of the solar equipment, excluding the town-owned land. So what this proposed agreement does is it looks to charge them almost half a million dollars, 481,000, which is sort of spread out over 25 years of the length of the agreement. So this was negotiated by the light department with Tangent Development. I'll see if I can answer the questions. I'm not the light department, but, yes.
I have solar in my house. What is the rate that you're going to purchase the solar for?
Okay. That I'll have to get back to you. I'll write it down.
Okay. And then, does this now open it up for solar companies to come in to Norwood, which they have not been allowed to do before, to homeowners and install? Because right now, I'm paying off still the loan on the solar, plus a maintenance fee every year.
So I don't, just this is my own opinion, I don't, I don't think it's going to be any different than how the MBTA lot was done when they did that a couple of years ago. So I don't think it will open up the doors to any other floodgate. I will find out about the rate that they're purchasing at. It sounds like it's a more favorable rate because it's, they're using the, oh, there's a hand up. I don't know if they're helping me out here. But yeah, they're generating, they're getting at a discounted rate. I'm not sure, is the hand that's up online, do you know the answer, or?
Ed, Debbie.
Oh, Ed, do you know?
Yeah, sorry. No, I don't know the answer, but do you have another question?
Okay. Well, we have, okay, one second. We have one more person in the room. We'll get to you next.
I'd start with three, I think, quick questions. First, is there any other potential use for that land that the solar panels are going on, or is it pretty much non-useable?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Who's responsible for the maintenance of the actual property, the grounds? It says the equipment, that the company will be responsible for the maintenance, but who's responsible for the grounds?
Okay. I'll find out. I mean, I'll write down your questions.
They're going to maintain it.
They are?
They have, like, mowing the grass, inside the fence.
The tangential?
Okay. And then, when their contract ends, or if they disband or something happens to the company, are they also going to be responsible? Is it in the contract that they will remove any equipment from the property when they are done and gone?
Okay, so it's a good question. I don't think that the contract itself is done and dusted yet. This is just, and gets us into the table to negotiate. It needs town meetings approval so that we can go to the table. So that's something that, I know this is being recorded, so we can definitely go back and make sure that these are all addressed. But yeah, that's something that we can make sure is in the contract.
Mike?
Yeah, sorry.
Mike, I just, in answer to the question that was asked about, in senior yellow sheet, the Norwood municipal light department is negotiating an agreement to purchase the power generated from this project at a discounted rate.
Yeah, I want to know what the rate is. I want the same reimbursement as they're getting.
I think, Ed, Debbie. Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it, and I can't find Tangent Development LLC registered anywhere. I can find no information on the company. The only thing that's publicly posted about them is the fact that they were involved with another company, Capital Dynamics, for the North Kinston job down in Little Island.
Okay. I can find out, again, I'll talk to the light department. Obviously, they've been negotiating, they know them, but I'm not them. Sorry, I don't have a better answer to that. Hey, I know that they have a representative that they've been negotiating with them.
Well, I appreciate any information on the company because for a project like this, it's nice to have a company that you have some information on, you know, get their own, know who owns them.
Okay.
If they're a holding company, know the fact that they're a holding company.
Yeah. We could probably have a slide for town meeting that addresses that. That's a good, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Sure.
Did this go out to bid?
I don't know the answer. I'm sorry. They're not here tonight, so I'll find out. Debbie?
So it's town land, DPW does the maintenance?
Currently, I mean, it's the landfill, so they're putting, yes, the DPW owns the maintenance, yes.
Okay. So we've got a bladder in there that we can't put anything up there. We can't plant a tree. We can't. So how are they going to stabilize the panels? I mean, will they tell us all that?
They're ground-mounted.
Man, dog.
They're just ground-mounted, so they're not screwed into the ground. They just sit on a ground, on the racks with a ballast system that holds them in place. So they're not going to penetrate the top of the landfill. They're not going to disturb, they're actually not going to disturb the surface of the ground of the landfill. These are basically racks that are placed.
And the weight of them keeps them from moving around?
Correct. They're very, very similar to what you see, you see them on the side of the highway, large ground-mounted solar fields.
Okay. So DPW is not going to be responsible for cutting along under the solar panels?
Not inside the fence, not there to maintain. I was in multiple meetings about this.
Well, I wasn't, so that's why I asked you the question.
The grounds inside the fence, the owner that has access to it is the company. They maintain their own equipment and maintain the grounds underneath their equipment. Because it's electrified equipment, so that's their gig.
All right. And they'll tell us when we, when we get more information on how many square foot it is, what part they're taking up of the?
It went through the ZBA and the CONCO. So there's plans available that can show you the whole size and the proposed rate.
Oh, that's good to know. Yes.
Do they have multiple projects? Do you recall that they currently operate?
That I don't know.
Okay. We'll have answers to these, obviously, for town meeting. So thank you for bringing these up now so we can get an answer. Moving on to the next two articles, we're going to look at them together, and these are acceptance of two clauses from the recently adopted HERO Act. The HERO Act is chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024. They introduce local options for increased veteran property taxes in Massachusetts, and they do require town meeting approval to do so. There's two clauses, 22i and 22j, both build upon each other. We're recommending that they be passed as a package unit, but obviously, it's going to take two articles to do that, so we can't have to do them separate motion. So 22i allows for an annual cost of living adjustment to veteran property tax, veteran, the current veteran property tax exemption, but mirrors adjustments for senior exemptions and impacts approximately 203 veterans in town. 22j provides an additional optional exemption, or 200% of the existing veteran exemption amount, offering further tax relief to approximately 65 more Norwood veterans, with specific limitations on reducing taxes of liability. So I, is that okay? Derek, you want to, do you want to come down? Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't have to.
Okay. Derek, our Veteran Service Affairs Director is here, just if there's any specific questions about this. But we did the analysis on this, and if we implement both clauses, 22i and 22j, it's estimated to have a fiscal impact of approximately $75,000 per year, which will not be reimbursed by the state. But I know Norwood's had a practice of always trying to support veterans as best as possible, so we are asking town meeting to consider these two exemptions. Any questions on that? Okay. Article five is what we consider a housekeeping item. We were very surprised that we, well, Norwood's been using direct deposit to pay its employees, both on the town and school side, since the 1990s. But our new auditor firm came in last year, and they pointed out that the town had not formally adopted the MGL that allows that practice, chapter 41, section 41b, which legally authorizes direct deposit payments. So we just want to clean that up and codify what we've already been doing for 30 years. And I think most employees would agree that direct deposit's better than getting a live check every two weeks. So is there any questions on that one? We appreciate your support on this one. Article six is to codify contracts with a five-year term for some specific items that we deal with. So our procurement law, the Uniform Procurement Act, generally caps the number of years, the maximum number of years of a contract that you can sign, to three years, but with the exception, town meeting can grant up to five-year contracts. So this came to light when the school department recently awarded contracts for bus transportation and food services, and they would, they And they would, they would have liked, there would have been better favorable rates if we were able to go to a five-year deal, but we did not have the ability to do that at this time. So that's why I brought this to the forefront and said, let's see if town meeting would consider going to five years for those two services. Plus, also, energy solutions could offer greater benefits as well to go to a five-year deal. So we've done this before. Town meeting previously authorized back in May of 2021. We did a five-year contract at the time for digital software, hardware, licensing and curriculum textbooks for the school department. So it's not the first time we're asking town meeting to consider five-year contracts. So what this, what this article would do would be to approve, to amend the procurement policy allowing five-year contracts specifically to these services, bus transportation, food services, and energy solutions. Is there any questions on that? Go here first.
Can Norwood go back then and renegotiate these contracts, took the five-year, and then get a better rate?
That's a good question. No?
So unfortunately, the contracts were awarded already for bus transportation and food services. The energy solution, we are holding off on that. So we're in the process of natural gas giving right now. We're heading off until after town meeting because there's a significant decrease, or increase, sorry, decrease in rates between the three-year and ten-year option. So we're holding off now, but the other two had to give up.
So they've lost. Can they negotiate?
But if we, the approval of this in two years, we go back to the table, we can negotiate a better deal. Debbie, a question?
If they don't perform?
Yeah.
Is there a dropout clause, or however you?
Yeah, most, I think, all of our contracts would have some non-performance language in that, yeah. So whether it's a three-year, one-year, or five-year deal, there's always ways to cut a contract, yeah. Procurement makes sure of that. Okay. I think for the next couple of articles, I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah, since they're land use related, starting with Article seven. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, so Article seven is an amendment to the zoning bylaw to a section regarding our floodplain overlay district. Essentially, what this does is update our floodplain management bylaw to comply with recent changes in the National Flood Insurance Program. That's a program that allows residents to access federal flood insurance if their properties are within the affected areas. The NFIP requirements change every so many years, and we are obligated to adopt these regulations within six months of the NFIP's program updates. This town meeting, should these be adopted, would comply with that timeframe. The updated FEMA maps, which redefine the floodplain overlay district, are available for review on our GIS website. I will say, we've been having some difficulty with the layers on that GIS website. So if anybody's logged on and had a hard time accessing them, feel free to give me a call or send me an email. We are working on them, but in the meantime, I can point you to a place on the NFIP's website where you can see those changes.
You have copies of those maps for the town meeting?
I, they're extensive, and I don't know that at the entire town size, you'd get the level of detail that would be useful to you. But let me think on that and see if there's some sort of a way we can provide that information in real time, because I think that's a helpful suggestion.
Yes, I, pardon that, date of July 8th, 2025, that hasn't happened yet. How was, can you please explain that date? Or is that a typo?
We need to adopt our changes to the zoning bylaw by then.
It's a deadline.
It's our deadline.
You're referencing the publication?
Yes, which is timed in correspondence with the effective date of the maps. So we need to be able to adopt these local regulations before the map change goes into effect. Does that make sense?
No, you said there's a report dated July 8th.
Yeah.
On page three.
Right, so all of these changes go into effect in July. We have to adopt them locally before then.
Well, maybe you want to restate it then, the changes must be made effective by July 8th instead of, because here it looks like you're referencing a document that's stated in the future.
All right, terrific. Hopefully, we're on track with all of our deadlines, but we'll definitely try to make sure that that's clear.
Okay, so what you're trying to say then is that we have to adopt it by July 8th? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
So maybe if you can, all right, okay, thank you.
Hopefully, town meeting won't go until after July 8th. Hopefully, it'll be, if not town meeting, it'll be okay.
Depends on the debate?
It depends on the market.
Sarah, I have a couple of questions. First, what happens if we don't adopt it? What happens if we don't have enough information to go to adopt it?
So if we don't, then our participation in NFIP is compromised. Residents won't be able to access that flood insurance program. I will say, we did not write these regulations locally. The most of these, most of the language was given to us by, by the state. The, the local kind of editorial bits that we added were appointing, you know, which town entity serves as the floodplain administrator. So that's a change. Previously, it was the building department. These changes propose it to be the conservation planner. Right now, that's Carly Roplin, she's our environmental planner in the ComD department. You know, and a couple of other very small, like, minor type changes. But the vast majority of this text is being presented to you as it was given to us by, by the state.
So my follow-up question is about this, one of the things that will put us into compliance with other than the new Massachusetts statewide building codes, but it doesn't say what the new building codes are. Would that, would the impacts of the building codes that are now being implemented by the state impact our local building codes? Like, would we then have to go to?
That's a great question, Gary.
We only have one code, and that is the State Building Code. And the 10th Edition goes into effect July 1st. Floodplain construction is regulated by the State Building Code. And so the new adopted code is actually six years ahead of what the current code is. So right now, we follow the 2015 I codes, IBC, IRC, et cetera. We are adopted, the state has adopted July 1st the 2021 I codes with massive amounts. And again, in that, floodplain construction is covered in that building code. So we want to be compliant with the 2021 State Building Codes, which will continually reference the FEMA maps as well as what we are mapping as our flood, our updated floodplains.
Okay, and that brings me to the new FEMA maps. Are there going to be areas of Norwood that are impacted that aren't currently impacted by the regulations that will be put in place by agreeing to this? So that new, that residents of Norwood now that are not in existing flood areas will buy this new map, be in existing flood areas, thus requiring them to get insurance that they don't have to have right now?
Well, it's an eligibility, it's whether or not they're, if they're not in the floodplain as it exists today on the map, and the map has expanded to bring them into the floodplain, they would, they wouldn't have access to private insurance, they would have to go through the federal.
So there's no grant father?
Yeah, so adopting this language does not change whether or not your property is or is not affected by the floodplain. It, it impacts your access to insurance, to flood insurance.
Okay, so the new map, so have people who will be impacted, are they getting any type of notification? Are they getting any, like, are people in town seeing this map? Like, are the people we represent having an opportunity to say, hey, wait a minute? This is, this is going to mess up my, my current state of being with my insurance?
I can say that I, I, on a case-by-case basis, I can't tell you what areas in particular are affected.
I can tell you my house.
So, you know, we can, we encourage people to access the GIS map, which shows you the floodplains and the overlays, and you know where you're, and it will show you a parcel.
Yeah, my concern goes back to people like the veterans. If you're talking about older, older populations, less access to internet, less tech savvy, so getting on a website that's already glitchy, by your own admission, is going to be really hard for residents. And I just feel like if this is, this is going to be impacting people's insurance, that some type of notification should probably be sent out.
Yeah, I, I will have to follow up to see if there's any way that we can use, or maybe FEMA has this information already aggregated, lists of affected properties. I have these maps, and I can see the changing boundaries, you know, of the floodplain areas. I don't, so many of these changes are very minor. It's not that entire portions of town are now on a floodplain that weren't. It, it can look like, I mean, I was looking at a property today with a homeowner, where, you know, the rear portion of the property had a shed that did not used to be in the floodplain, but now the shed is, the line moved up on the, just the western side of the backyard. But in the neighbor's property, you know, it used to be a straight line, right? Like, the floodplain goes right through here, almost parallel to the Natchez River, right? Now, it reflects the grading and the geography. So where that shed might be in the floodplain here, next door, the entire backyard now is no longer in the floodplain. It's a lot of kind of minor changes to the, the contour of that line, I think is probably a reflection of changing technology, better being able to pay off the actual risks on these properties, which I think ultimately is a good thing. So it's not the entire floodplain has categorically expanded, you know, 30%, which is good news, but also, I do think makes it a little bit trickier to try to kind of aggregate like a mailing list, so to speak. But I will absolutely follow up on that and see if that's possible, because I agree, I think it's important for residents to know something so important about their properties.
Thank you.
It could really affect the property values of some of those homes too, because Arvela, for instance, won't grant flood insurance if there's no body of water near your home, whether in a floodplain or not. It's not a body of water. So then you have to go get private insurance. So if somebody's trying to sell a home?
Can look it up.
Are you going to have to disclose to the potential buyer through your Realtor that they're going to have to get private insurance?
I, I don't have the answer for you. That's out of my area of expertise. What I can tell you is that our goal here is trying to make sure that everybody has access to as many options for flood insurance as possible, and that's the goal of this specific zoning article.
Have some of these floodplains changed because of overbuilding?
No.
And paving over areas? So we created the problem that increased the floodplain?
I, I couldn't tell you the answer to that question. I think it's probably more largely related to climate change.
I would say it's huge.
And kind of, you know, the increasing water levels and flooding events, but again, we've received the maps and the language from FEMA, right? This is, this is the intent of this.
So just, did FEMA come in and go through the whole town of Norwood and figure this out? Or how, how did they determine these changes?
They use mostly aerial technology in GIS.
They consider rainfall, they consider, this is science, and they update these maps regularly based on historical data and how that data changes. And it's just not, it's not just Norwood, it's, it's, you know, obviously, it's federal, but it impacts the whole state from coastal regions to riverfront regions to wetlands.
Should go back to perk testing.
All right, I'll take one more question on this one, and then just to be respectful of everybody's time, we can move on. And then if anybody has additional questions, I should have said this at the beginning, to your point earlier, please do call my office. There's only so much we can get to, I think, here in one night, but we are available, you know, eight to four Monday through Friday to answer any questions that folks have. Somebody?
Ed Ferris.
Ed Ferris, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, posting to the town site is probably as new, if you could post anything, even if it was just screenshots, which you see, it would be helpful for this.
Yes, thank you. So our next one is the amendment to Section 5.4 on non-conforming uses in structures. This one is a little wonky, so I'll do my best to try to make it as easily understood as possible. Bear with me, I'll blow a little bit. So right now, our current bylaw requires a special permit for any changes to pre-existing non-conforming one and two-family residential structures. A non-conforming structure is one that does not comply with the current zoning bylaw, but most likely did at the time it was constructed, okay? Some of you may have heard the term grandfathering or something, and we don't use that comment as much anymore. It's more accurate to be able to say it's pre-existing non-conforming. Now, if you at present have a pre-existing non-conforming home, and many residents in Norwood do, perhaps your lot is undersized. So the area, the total size of your lot is smaller than what is required in your district today in 2025, and you want to put on an addition to your home. The bylaw right now requires that you go to the zoning board of appeals and receive a special permit in order to do that. If you are in a conforming lot, so you live in a house that has more than enough area and it conforms in every other way, and you want to build an addition, but you want to put it into your rear setback right now. So you want to build it closer to your rear neighbors than is presently allowed. Right now, you need to get a variance, right? We talked about that earlier. That's your special exception to the bylaw. You have to be able to establish that essentially there's something really unique about your property, and there's a really compelling circumstance where you deserve that exception in the form of a variance. Right now, there's a disparity in the way our current zoning bylaw is written, in that if you are conforming, you need the variance to encroach into a setback to create a new nonconformity. But if you're short on your lot area or your frontage, or you're currently pre-existing non-conforming in some other way, it's a special permit. Does that make sense? Am I, is everybody with me so far? I have a little sound. Okay. Further, our zoning bylaw says that if you are in that category of pre-existing non-conforming, you're putting on this addition, you're getting the special permit, it says that you are required to get that special permit if the addition alteration, the change that you're making increases the habitable floor area of your home by more than 25%. Anything below 25%, the bylaw says, that doesn't increase the nonconformity of the property. Essentially, it's so minor, it doesn't warrant further review. And Gary's able to issue a building permit for that, you know, by right. It doesn't need to go to the zoning board of appeal. 25% increase is relatively small. Most people, when they put on an addition to their home, even if it's just expanding their kitchen a little bit or adding on one bedroom, just what we've seen based on sizes of homes in Norwood, 25% sends a lot to the ZBA, right? As people, especially now with the housing market being the way it is, people are trying to stay in place, make their homes work for themselves and their families, not moving as often, right? So we see a lot of volume of these special permit applications go to the zoning board of appeals. And with any, like with any process, you know, we always want to look at that and say, is this serving its purpose, right? The purpose of these special permit reviews is to make sure that construction is not substantially more detrimental to the town generally and to the neighborhoods where this activity is happening. What we have found is that despite this high volume of special permit requests that go to the ZBA, the vast majority of them are granted by the ZBA, and the vast majority of those are even granted without conditions, meaning there's not even any sort of adjustment that the ZBA requests in order to make it, you know, meet that threshold of being more detrimental. And I recognize that this is my opinion, but I hope you'll, you'll accept it. I don't believe that the ZBA is just free with their approvals. They give a great deal of thought to every application that comes before them. I think you're fortunate in this town to have a ZBA that really understands the bylaw and the legal thresholds. They do a really good job in their review. What they're finding is simply that most of these applications are not substantially more detrimental. However, they don't have the ability to apply that higher standard for the types of projects that create new nonconformities, the ones that actually get closer to the side lotlines, right? They are obligated, under our current bylaw, to consider a special permit only for any type of addition for these, these properties. So going back to our changes here, what's proposed and what you will be asked to consider at town meeting is really two essential changes to this section of the bylaw. One says that if you are creating a new nonconformity, whether you're pre-existing noncon- whether you're preexisting nonconforming or not, that requires a variance. It achieves some consistency on how that is applied across town. But on the flip side of that, what it also does is it lifts that 25% increase in habitable floor area that triggers review to the ZBA at all, it lifts that to 75%. The intention here is to try to focus the review of the ZBA on the cases that are most likely to actually have some detrimental impact to the neighbors. It'll send more cases to the ZBA with a higher level review for those additions that do get maybe uncomfortably close to the neighbors, right? Or are a little bit taller than expected and might block privacy or daylight or the types of things that we see that residential budders that care about. But what it does do is it gives a little bit more flexibility for homeowners to be able to improve their properties in modest ways without needing to go to the zoning board, spend the money on the permitting fees, have the delay of the project and go through this process that, you know, notifies all of their neighbors within 300 feet for something. As a, you know, a 25% is a pretty minor change to their structure. Questions? Sorry, I don't apologize.
I need to mount here.
No, I told you, I told you to wait, so okay.
So I think 25% being a minor change depends on your lot size, right? It depends, and depending on where you are in Norwood, I think in my neighborhood it wouldn't be a minor change, but I think in some neighborhoods it might be a big, a much bigger change if you're adding 25% of your house. So I'm curious, for my two questions would be, how did we jump from 25 to 75 as opposed to 25 to 50? And what recourse do neighbors have if you're in a neighborhood that has smaller lot size and that 25% does feel much more aggressive or, you know?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. It is kind of an art form, right? To be able to draft policy that achieves this goal, but also applies to the entire town with this whole variety of lot sizes and home sizes, right? The size of your home, that structure matters too. Just to kind of explain some of the process here. This was something that the building commissioner and I had recognized, you know, that's part of our job is to kind of identify these trends. We both have experienced working in other towns too, so we have a sense as to how other communities kind of handle this, which is sometimes helpful for perspective. The planning board discussed this a bit and decided to create like an ad hoc working group. So two representatives from the planning board, two representatives from the zoning board of appeals, plus staff met and really kind of talked all of that through. What is the number? And that was a big subject of that conversation. We talked about changes, you know, 25 all the way up to 100%. What is that appropriate threshold? And 75% was where that group landed on, in part by looking at the volume of applications and the type of activity that comes before the ZBA, to kind of think about, again, you know, of all of these special permits that they receive and looking at each of those cases, which ones do end up rising to that level of potentially being very impactful to the neighbors? And that group had consensus that 75% was a reasonable threshold to warrant that addition.
Do we know if one of the considerations is how many people show up at the meetings to speak on the 25 versus the 75? Like, because for me, the more important piece isn't how many applications have to go through the people who are doing the job. My more important piece is do people have an opportunity to speak out and feel represented and heard? Additionally, I personally have not had very good experiences with the zoning board of appeals in terms of properties owned by contractors, right? And so for me, when we talk about properties for contract that contractors own or builders in Norwood, particularly builders of renown in Norwood, I have particular issues with freelancing sort of their work without the ability to. So does this go just for property owners or is it contractors building new properties?
Yep, so I think that's a fair question. And I think that's in part why we really try to make sure that the bylaw itself, right, sets as fair a guideline as possible because that standard has to be applied to structures, no matter who owns them, right? Or how many neighbors come and speak in favor or against. You know, the standards are what they are, and we have to apply them evenly in order for them to be fair. And again, it's an imperfect craft, right? Trying to figure out what, if there is a number, right? What that appropriate number can and should be. What I can tell you is that, you know, the working group gave, you know, a great deal of thought to that and thought that the 75% would be, would be an appropriate level of review. Anything below that 75% increase, a reminder that because of the variance required then, those projects that are additions, under a 75% increase in habitable floor area, wouldn't go to the zoning board if it was proposed fully within the confines of the setbacks.
Right.
So this is not an addition that's getting built too close. It's fully abiding by the zoning bylaw in every other respect. Those are the ones that have the more increased, you know, ease of permitting essentially. Not, it really tries to focus, the projects that go to the ZBA are the ones that really are the most deserving of that extra scrutiny and the notice to a butters who deserve to know about, you know, those increased intensity type projects. It's really trying to focus that in the right direction where it's most deserved.
Okay, thank you.
Does this only apply to additions or does it also include nonconforming vacant lots?
Well, this would only apply to a preexisting nonconforming single one or two-family home.
Okay.
So a vacant lot would have to comply with the current zoning.
The second, the second question is, how does this relate to ADUs?
In what, in what regard?
If you're putting, increasing the floor space, as you mentioned, family and this and that and the other thing, are you creating an in-law apartment or are you creating a separate, you know, segment to your house?
The statute for ADUs does not allow a special permit for the creation of an ADU, whether it's attached or detached. So if you are in a preexisting nonconforming, it specifically protects preexisting nonconforming structures. So if you have a preexisting nonconforming, single-family home, and you are going to put an addition on with an ADU, okay? That ADU is subject to the dimensional restrictions of the principal dwelling unit only, not for the use. Cannot, cannot require, statute does not allow a town to regulate the creation of a protected use ADU by special permit. It has to be by right. But the dimensional requirements for the district, for that principal dwelling unit, would apply to the ADU, setbacks, heightened area, et cetera.
And that's what section 5.4, the types of changes we're talking about here. These are special permits that are granted against the dimensional requirements, not necessarily how the addition's going to be used. It's really relating to expansion of the structure itself and the dimensional requirements.
Yeah, I think this is dependent on where the home is. In some cases, someone can expand 75%, no problem. In other cases, 25% you're encroaching on the neighbors. I don't know, I think this has to be on a case-by-case basis.
Well, again, that's, that's the first thing that happens with any proposed addition is it gets a zoning review by name to see, number one, is the, what are the nonconforming? Is it conforming or not conforming? By lot area, side setback, rear setback, what are the nonconformities? And what this does is, if you're going to increase that nonconformity, that would not qualify for a special permit act with this change. If you're increasing that nonconformity, if you're gonna, if you've got a five-foot side setback and you want to make it four feet or you want to encroach on another rear setback, that would then require a variance, which is a more difficult thing to do. So the increase that we're talking about here is simply in the habitable floor area without creating new nonconformities. So you can't, you can't infringe on a rear setback where you once didn't. You may just have a lot that is undersized or lacks frontage or is nonconforming on the left side, but you're going to put the addition on the right side where you have plenty of room and you're going to add 450 square feet to a thousand-square-foot ranch. Right now, I would have to send you to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit, which again is typically not, the board is going to find that it doesn't increase the nonconforming nature in the, or create a new nonconformity, doesn't increase the nonconforming nature of it and is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's what they're looking at. It's a single-family house today, it's a single-family house tomorrow. You're not adding 15 bedrooms, you're adding a family room or a kitchen or a bathroom or a master suite or something to that back. So it almost always universally gets approved.
But how is this-
This is just raising the threshold. It's allowing a little bit more leniency for a size without having the arduousness of going through the board of appeals.
Provided that they're constructing it within the setbacks.
But how do you know?
How do we know? Because we require, we require a plot, certified plot plan with the building permit application.
At that point, you determine whether-
That's when I make my determination on whether it's conforming or not conforming, what's the nonconformity, and whether or not it needs to be referred to the ZBA for special permit, whether it needs a variance or whether it's allowed by right.
And what about neighbors? Without a food, if neighbors have to be, if there's a crumbstone on the rear or-
No, if it go, if it requires a special permit or a variance, it goes to a public hearing. And then a butters are notified, and the butters can, can come to the meeting, listen, and they can speak to the board with their concerns. But if it is, if it doesn't require a special permit because it meets the criteria, then it would be approved by right for the expansion.
John, do you have a question?
Yes, Ed Ferris is online. Ed, go ahead.
Hey. I understand the efficiency question involved here. I understand what you're trying to accomplish. But the problem is the way you're presenting this, the numbers don't make any sense. I've done this a couple of different times right now, using a quarter-acre lot, square and rectangle. And 75% increase is huge. I understand checks and balances involved. But if you're going to present this, you already gave three examples. And you should be showing those examples, like how does this actually apply? Because we're going to see the text of it like we are tonight, and then we're going to go over these sexy and questions again during town meeting because you don't have any data to support your number.
Thank you.
So let's try to do like an active listening and try to rephrase this like rule in plain English and see if that helps folks and see if it went well.
Yeah.
So there are like five or six ways your property could be in violation of today's rules. It might be too far this way or too far that way or too far that way. Okay, let's say one of those things is wrong. If you want to make it really big and you change it in a way that's not wrong today or wrong in that way that's already wrong, you're good. If you're going to break any of those rules or you're going to break the rule even worse, no go, get a variance. If you're not going to break a rule, you're cool as long as it's not huge, 75%. And to the point about the rectangles, it's a good one, I thought about that, but not every house is one floor. So if you have a three-story house, you can add like 10 feet to the left, but you've got 30 feet to the left and now square it. Don't ask me, square it. Now you've got a lot of feet, but you haven't really need that much.
So it's habitable floor area, it's not the 75%-
Yeah, habitable, exactly, yeah.
Habitable floor area, it's not gross floor area. So we determine that by the assessor's records.
Yeah, so the basement, maybe not, but first floor, second floor, third floor, you name it.
So again, the example of you could have a 950-square-foot ranch and expand it up.
Right.
You could do it up without creating, as long as you don't expand and create a nonconformal conformity dimensionally and you don't eclipse that 75% habitable floor area. That would be allowed without having to get you a variance or a special permit.
Exactly, yeah. Is that, did I, more or less?
One more and then we'll move on. I know it's getting late, so again, I want to be respectful.
It's another question, just a comment. This is kind of abstract. It would be helpful, I think, when you present this to provide some examples, like this is not even covered by-
We do have some pictures that we're preparing.
That would be awesome because I, it is, you know, it is like Ed's trying to do. He's trying to draw diagrams, trying to figure this out. Like, it would be helpful to have some good examples that show this, and I think that would like help people immensely.
Great feedback, thank you so much. All right. There's our fairly straightforward. Article nine is addressing commercial and personal kennels, animal kennels in the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. So last March, we created a new district, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, which, thinking back to our diagram of the table of uses, created a new column. Separately, we had another article that created some new rows about kennels, both commercial kennels and personal kennels and where they're allowed throughout town. That created a new row. Since we had two different articles at the same time and we couldn't anticipate what would happen with one without the other, right now we have a blank space where they come together and we don't have any sort of response as to whether it's a Y, an N, a PB or a BA for those kennels in the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. That's what this article is and it seeks to say that they are not allowed in that district.
For veteran town meeting members, this is what Mr. Hopcroft has questioned the fact that this was missing. And so this is a procedural article in order to take care of that, which could not get done until the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District was approved by the state.
So here we are finally getting to fill that blank space.
What happens to people who already have a kennel in that district?
So this is an overlay district, so-
So it's efficient in terms of-
Yeah, I don't think there's actually anybody who would be impacted by this yet. We've promoted one development that hasn't even started construction under the MBTA Communities District. So it really is just going to pertain to future residents to the properties that were developed under that overlay. Okay, so this next one is about multifamily uses within the Boston, Providence Highway District. Back in 2021, town meeting voted on a series of articles that concerned development in the Route 1 corridor. One was the creation of a brand-new zoning district. It was a very ambitious piece of zoning. It created an entirely new district for the property directly on Route 1, northbound and southbound from, you know, one side of the town to the other. Previously, it was kind of a patchwork quilt of different zoning districts with different requirements. The BPH was created to really kind of streamline that and create a cohesive district that promoted, you know, a handful of goals. One of them was increasing the amount of green space, improving our landscaping requirements, making it visibly more attractive with a more streamlined sign by law, and also encouraging a more consistent mix of uses designed to encourage business growth in our prime business corridor in town. Separately, we also had two other articles that created NUODs, mixed-use overlay districts. These are smaller pockets, little bubbles located within the BPH in two separate locations, one being around the intersection of University Ave and Everett. We call that the Northern Gateway NUOD. And the other NUOD is around the Vanderbilt area. These would be overlays, so zoning kind of layered on top of the underlying Boston, Providence Highway zoning district that would further allow for different types of development there. Mixed use, meaning development where you could have both commercial and residential in the same mix, sometimes even in the same building. In downtown areas, that looks like ground floor, commercial, you know, your retail with residential above. But that's what that looks like. So at the time, when planning board spent all its time kind of drafting this change and then gave the language to town meeting, there was a lot of discussion centered around multifamily housing use. And there were a lot of concerns about what the impacts of that would be. And so the planning board studied that. There were traffic studies. If you were there in 2021, you might remember the exceptionally long presentation from our traffic engineer about multifamily housing use. long presentation from our traffic engineer about multifamily housing use in, in the Boston Providence Highway District. And so the intention was that multifamily housing would only be permitted in these MUODs in the context of a mixed-use development where there would be commercial to offset the economic impact of residential. That it would not be permitted generally throughout the Boston Providence Highway District. And you can see in the way the zoning bylaw is written now that it was, there was some intention for that to be reflected. Right now, there's a footnote to that table of uses that says, you know, in the mixed-use overlay districts, you have to follow the requirements that are detailed later in the bylaw in section such and such. So much about zoning is about syntax. It's a legal document, and, you know, Gary will tell you that sometimes when we get tricky questions, or is this allowed, is this not allowed, it really comes down to reading word for word, what exactly does this mean, pulling in town counsel, you know, our attorneys, to be able to help us discern, you know, what does this actually say? The devil is in the details. And in this case, we are seeking to clarify this section of the bylaw because it may be interpreted now to mean that multifamily housing is permissible by special permit throughout the Boston Providence Highway District, which was not the intention certainly of planning board when it advanced this zoning. We don't believe it was the intention of town meeting when it voted to adopt the Boston Providence Highway District either. This could be very impactful, right? This type of, the scale of this could have a big impact on the type of businesses or residences that are developed on Route 1. And so the planning board proposes this change to further clarify that multifamily only be permitted within the confines of those two MUODs. The intention here is to return the language to the intent of town meeting when it voted on this. But again, it's appropriate for town meeting to, to make that call. Does anybody have any questions on this one?
Sorry, this is very specific to my personal interests, but I, and I'm not, I'm just not familiar enough with the language. I know that our town is currently in a lawsuit with David Spiegel over the 596 and the Ponce Street address, which, by the way, he's currently picking down trees and working on that he's not supposed to, but besides the point. So my question for you is, does the change in this specific language impact that lawsuit in any way, shape, or form that would provide increased rights to the owner of the property?
No.
Okay, thank you.
This would pertain to development?
Just the moving forward after town meeting and after the attorney general approves any change that this town meeting will make.
Okay. Thank you.